We have 1:35. Today is a study session for the Prescott City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 14th. It is 1:35 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Ruasing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present. I can hear you.
All right, our discussion today will be on two different topics. The first one will be a presentation and discussion regarding the debt options available to the city. And then we'll move on to Item B, introduction and discussion of an airport vicinity overlay district as an amendment to the land development code. So let's kick it off with Option A. And presenting today is our scintillating budget director, Mark Woodfill.
Why, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council. Today, we're going to be talking about debt or capacities and what kind of debts we can issue and kind of when they're most appropriate. It's kind of, it's a workshop that we do a lot with new councils, once they get in, on their feet and start moving, just as an educational means. We're privileged to have with us today Managing Director of RBC Capital Markets out of the Phoenix office, Kurt Freund, who will also be presenting with me. We'll kind of tag team him, he'll do the most of it, and I'll add color. It'll be a, it'll be a fun approach. So as we get started on this, one thing to keep in mind, debt is a financing means, not a funding means. So you always have to pay this stuff back, with the exception of GO bonds and improvement district bonds. But we'll get into that. But just because you can get $10 million or $50 million doesn't mean you can afford it, just like a mortgage. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Freund.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. If Mr. Woodfill is scintillating, I'm not sure what that'll make me, but I like that. I've never heard Mark called scintillating before.
Yeah. And just to clarify, RBC and Kurt in particular has been helping the city probably for the last three or four decades with our debt issues in one capacity or another, either as a financial advisor, as an underwriter, or just somebody we call and take advantage of to get answers to finance things.
For those of you who aren't how familiar with RBC, we're one of the leading firms in municipal finance in the country, as well as in Arizona. And we've been around for a long time, back to the '30s in Arizona. So something we've done for a while.
Let me say in particular, congratulations to the Canadian Open sponsored by the Royal Bank of Canada. It was a, quite a remarkable and memorable Canadian Open, so very exciting.
Yeah. They also sponsor the Heritage Golf Tournament in the States, which is a good one. I never get invited because I work with public sector folks, so you know, I can't, can't take clients with me, so I never get to go. You all should have this book in front of you, it's also up on the screens. And, you know, I think, just starting with the table of contents, you know, we're going to cover four areas, and there's a lot here. But the four main areas are just an overview of the existing debt of the city, a summary of the financing options available to the city under the statutes, talk about your bond ratings briefly, and then I also have some rating agency credit reports in there. I promise you, I will not cover all those things in great detail. We'll go through them, try to focus on the things that, talking to Mr. Woodfill, I think are relevant to the city. Ask any questions as we go along, I'd be happy to be interrupted, happy to answer any questions that you have. So with that as a prelude, just turn to Tab 1, which is talking about the city's existing What I tell you, just as a council, as a governing body, first and foremost, the city, other than water and wastewater area, the city doesn't have a lot of outstanding debt. You'll see later when we're talking about it, the city's credit ratings are fairly high. They're higher than most cities of like size in Arizona. And that's credit to the council and a credit to your finance director, budget director, in terms of kind of managing the process that you have. You'll see on this page, there's three types of debt that the city has outstanding. The first is lease revenue excise tax bonds. Those are bonds secured by excise taxes or sales taxes and state shared revenues. You have one community facilities district bond issued out. Most of the council maybe is familiar with that, but that was done for Haciampa. And then the last thing you have is you have a number of loans with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, or WIFA. For those who don't know WIFA, WIFA is a state agency that uses federal funds and state funds to make low interest cost loans to political subdivisions in the state for either water projects or wastewater projects. And so, just those three. Turning to this first category, lease revenue excise tax bonds. These are bonds that get issued by the city or through the city's MPC, Municipal Property Corporation. They're secured by city excise taxes and state shared revenues primarily. They're also secured by fines, fees, permits, forfeitures. These items listed at the bottom of this page, and you can see, these are the revenues that secure these types of bonds that the city issues. Historically, the city would issue these through its municipal property corporation, which is an indirect way of borrowing against these excise taxes. More recently, in the last, I don't know, four years, roughly three, four years, we've switched over to having the city issue this debt directly as a more efficient way to get it done, cost you less, more direct financing approach.
Yeah, and definitely MPCs came about back in the '70s in response to some restrictions at the legislative. And for a lot of years, it was the only way municipalities thought they could issue bonds because that's what bond councils were telling us. So we had one, we used it extensively for a lot of things. Bond councils no longer feel that way, they're comfortable with just straight excise tax pledges from the city. So that's what we did in 2019 when we refunded two of our outstanding MPC issues. And then, so we only have one MPC issue outstanding in our plan, management staff's plan, is once that is either retired or refunded, which it's up for refund in 2024, it retires in 2034, we won't issue any more debt through the MPC and we'll be able to dissolve the MPC at that time.
Okay. Turning to the next page, just to summarize these two bond issues. So as Mr. Woodfill mentioned, there's two bond issues that are outstanding, that are secured by excise taxes, broadly, excise taxes of the city. One was this Municipal Property Corporation refunding issue done in 2014, this series 2014 bonds. They were originally issued in the face amount of $9 million. They're down to 7.5, 7.6 million outstanding. It was a refinancing issue, and just as an aside, what we do working with the city is we keep an eye on the city's outstanding debt. When there's an opportunity to refinance that debt, then we'll come to you and say, "Look, you could refinance this, issue new bonds, pay off the old bonds, the new bonds are at a lower interest rate, save your money over the, over the term of the financing." And so you'll see that both of these transactions are refunding issues. In 2019, as Mr. Woodfill just mentioned, we refinanced a series 2010 and a series 2011 bond issues of the city. Those were issued through the MPC. We refinanced them through an excise tax transaction directly issued by the city. In 2019, when it was done, it was about 16.5 million of paramount that was issued. It's down to 14 million. And those, you can see under the maturity dates, the 2014 refunding issue pays off in 2034, and the 2019 issue pays off in 2029. Those were the same final maturity dates as the original issues that they refinanced, which is typically what you do when you refinance the debt. Turning to the next slide, this just then shows you the annual debt service payments, principal and interest payments by year, fiscal year, for each of the issues. And like I just said, the 2014 issue goes out to 2034, it's about $800,000 of annual debt service or principal and interest payments. The 2019 only goes out to 2029, and it's about 1.9 million, adding to the numbers at the bottom, which is about 2.7 million of debt through fiscal '29, and then drops off to $800,000 after that. Okay? So that's the, that's the excise tax debt, and we'll come back to that when we talk about capacity. Okay.
And just, just one quick comment on these excise tax. The city historically only issues these on, on bond for projects that have a revenue flow. We're buying a water ranch to sell water, there's a revenue flow from that activity. The other one, we're road projects, we have road tax coming in, we need to upfront these projects, there's a revenue activity for that. So even though we pledge excise tax, we don't use excise tax because as we went over on the 17th of May, all of our excise type revenues are readily used up in our operations. And if we, of course, pledge them to debt, they're not available for that. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no problem at all, it's a good point to add. One other thing I'd add, the reason you do excise tax, you'll see this when we look at the various types of bonding that you can do under the statute, is because it's a broad pledge, meaning you have a lot of money, remember, we looked at that prior slide, your revenues from it are 44 million and change. So you're pledging a big dollar amount against the debt, which gives it a high credit rating, which brings down your interest rate. So it's a more efficient way for you to borrow, even though the payment comes from your enterprise fund, as Mr. Woodfill just mentioned. Not all cities do that as well, I would tell you. Some cities, you know, they might borrow for a project and use sales tax monies to pay it. So just depends on your circumstance. Okay. Community facilities district bonds, or CFD bonds, this is the second type of debt that the city has outstanding. You had created a community facilities district, which is a special district, it's a subset of the city, usually used for master planned communities. And so you did that back in...
2000.
2000, was it? I was trying to remember, thanks, Mark.
Yeah, 96 for the first one and 2000 for the two.
Yeah. And so you did that, you went out and you issued CFD bonds, they were assessment lien bonds. So the way those bonds work is you put a assessment lien on the properties within the district, and assessment lien is second only to general property taxes. So, you know, it's a, it's a pretty secure type of lien against property. And then it was refinanced by this Haciampa CFD number two, small deal, 160,000 of bonds that were issued in 2017. They refinanced the original deal, again, just to lower the debt service. There's a small amount of debt remaining, 23,471, goes out to 2024. I would imagine it might get paid off prior to that date, but, but basically no community facilities district debt. We'll talk about this more, just briefly, in the next section. But a CFD debt, community facilities district debt, is used largely for master planned communities, to put in public infrastructure in association with those master planned communities. So public infrastructure, roads, sewer lines, lighting, et cetera.
And just, and again, we're going to talk about it again when we talk about the types of debt. CFDs have a place in the community, and CFDs can be abused by developers. As Kurt knows, I'm a big fan of CFDs. Not really. I'm a big fan of CFDs if they're used correctly. You need to have a policy in place that provides the council some guidance when a CFD comes forward. And Kurt and Michael Kaffiso, our bond counsel, worked with our legal department, of course, George is here, so first he's hearing of it, putting together a policy, CFD policy to give council that option, those options. So we will be bringing that to you over the next couple of months to get that in place because our current CFD policy is from the '90s, and it's not great. But CFDs, if used correctly, are good. And we could, I could spend an hour telling you why they're not good or how they should be used. For instance, CFD number two from Haciampa, in my opinion, was not done well. It did not provide the citizens with a like comparison. The only thing financed with CFD number two was the internal lines and internal roads for a subdivision, which every subdivider is required to put in. Generally, CFD should be used for something that's unique, a water crossing that isn't usually part of a subdivision, or a trail crossing that isn't part of a subdivision, not for the lines that is in every other subdivision, because then, when somebody's buying, this lot costs this here, it costs something different across the street. It's not readily obvious to the citizen, and I only know this from answering phone calls for the last 25 years on these subdivisions, it's not clear to them until they get a bill from us, and they say, "What the heck is this?" And we say, "Well, they disclosed it to you in a pile of documents like this that they got." So anyway, I won't belabor that any longer. That will be coming this summer as we bring that policy forward.
And it'll, it'll be a good subject, I think, for the council to dig into. CFDs are somewhat unique in that they are, they're like a little community within the broader city. And so the question is, in that little community, like, who runs the show? From my perspective, and I think Mr. Woodfill feels the same on this, the buck always comes back to the council, right? Like, if people are upset, they're going to come back to you. So I would tell you, always be the board of directors of a CFD. If I'm a developer, I love developers, some of my best friends are developers, but, but they're coming from a different perspective, right? And, and, you know, they're looking to get repaid for money that they might have put in for infrastructure, which is fine, but their interests are going to be different than the city's interests. And, you know, city councils, I think it's important that they understand kind of what it means, what the liability issues are, what's fair, what's not fair, what's right, what's not right, before you go into them. So just echoing, I guess, what Mr. Woodfill had to say, but that's, I think, for another, another session.
Yeah, definitely. A lot longer discussion, but something to keep in mind whenever you think of this. And I can't remember if Michael was here at the time or not, but when somebody doesn't pay, the developer isn't here selling their house.
That's right.
We are, council is, the city manager is. So, you know, they want to get their money, get in it and get out of it, and then we're stuck 30 years collecting the monies and making friends in the community. So enough said.
How long have you been with RBC Capital Markets?
Whoa, that's kind of an unfair question. I've been with RBC Capital Markets 35 years, this is my 36th year.
All right, so you were just about at the tail end of seeing the impact of very, very high interest rates.
Yes, sir.
Very restricted capital funding markets. And since that time and now, those considerations haven't really been a factor in funding a lot of CFDs. Do you see that they will be made more available now as we move into a very clearly high inflation and inflationary, tight market conditions? There was a lot of concern that CFDs wouldn't be able to get much attention because they were such small dogs on the, on the pathway, but now things have changed. What's your assessment of that?
Well, I, I think there's a number of answers to it. You know, I, one, I would say, what drives community facilities districts and community facilities district financing, first and foremost, is developers. It's a way for them to access capital that's not something that they have to pay, it's paid for by the property owners in effect, because you either do general obligation bonds, or you do special assessment bonds, so you're putting a tax or lien on the property. So if I'm a developer and the finance director says, "Nope, that's your problem to put in that street, that lighting, whatever it might be," well, then I got to go raise the capital for it. The capital that I raise for it as a developer is always, in any interest rate environment, going to be at a higher cost. So one, if I'm a developer, I want to access a cheaper cost of capital. But two, if I have to do it myself as the developer, then I got to build it into my proforma and what I sell the homes for. If instead I can flip it over and have it be public infrastructure paid through the issuance of CFD bonds, it gets put on the houses in a different way, i.e. via a tax or an assessment lien, not by raising the price of the home. So for those two reasons, if I'm a developer, I am always going to want to access public financing like that, and that's what CFDs are. Doesn't matter if interest rates are 3% or 10%, they're always going to be less than what I can borrow as a developer. Second thing I would say is, you know, we're going into a change in development cycles, I believe, at this point. We've been in a pretty rah-rah period. I think we're potentially headed towards a recession. I think things will cool from that standpoint, so if I'm a developer putting capital at risk, I may slow down, actually. So that's more commentary on development. Every place is unique. We live in a blessed state where people are moving and developments happening pretty much all the time. But you'll see it more, more knowingly than I will in your community here because you live here. And so you'll see whether your CFD development, which is tied to a master planned community, slows down a little bit because of what's happening in the economy. But I think that as long as the developer can access cheaper money, provided they're going forward with their development, that's not the only factor, but provided they're going forward, they'll still look to do CFDs. Last thing I would say is the market, like, who buys CFD bonds? They're small. This issue we were just talking about is $160,000. Not much money. I can find one investor, one of you guys, or gals, on, on the, on the council, who's got $160,000 that wants to get a decent interest rate, as long as they're comfortable with the credit. So they're generally smaller bond issues, just because of the way they work. They get bigger over time, but they're smaller issues. We, we find it easy to sell them because there's a lot of high net worth people that are willing to buy muni bonds because they're in the highest tax bracket. Hopefully, that's responsive to your questions.
So you do local funding?
Yeah.
That's good to know. And generally, lenders like to have the security of governments being able to pay them back their, their capital, right?
Absolutely.
Isn't that generally worth a couple of points?
Yeah. It comes into play on community facilities districts, Mr. Mayor. Those are secured by a property tax on the property within the district, or an assessment lien on the property within the district. So what you'll look at is you look at the value of the property within the district. That's why these bond issues are small to start, because if you think about it, if I have a master planned community out, out, you know, in Prescott area, and I'm going to develop it, it starts out as raw land, it's dirt. Its value for tax purposes, and its value generally is lower. So unless I'm going to put a gigantic property tax rate on or gigantic assessments on it, I'm not going to be able to raise very much money because the property's only worth so much. Once I put homes on it, I start putting stores on it, and, you know, laundromats, and, you know, parks and all that stuff, value goes up, right? And as the value goes up, then I can borrow more because I got more value that I'm taxing or I'm leaning against. Does that, does that make sense?
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Steve.
Mark, it seems to me that Stone Ridge was a good example of a bad example of CFDs. Is that correct? We don't have to look far to find a couple of bad examples of CFDs, and just little ways to the east, and you can find several of them. Stone Ridge was one, went bankrupt, as I recall, Kurt might know more. They have, also have a commercial CFD district that has an enormous property tax rate, like nine point something, where ours is .25. So it's nine something on top of everything else, crazy high numbers. They also have an entertainment district, they got, they have like nine CFD districts out in Prescott Valley.
Right.
So, you know, there's a lot of lessons we can learn looking around the state. And again, we always try to enter these things cautiously and make the best decisions upfront because it's a lot easier than trying to fix it after it's broken. And it's not necessarily the city, other than the fact that you have a problem in your town, because these debts are not an obligation of the city. There is no obligation to the city at all on CFD debts. It's an obligation of your citizens that live in that district, and they're the ones who you're selling the house on or raising property tax beyond belief on. So that's something to keep in mind, is, you know, we're here to represent our citizens as a whole, so.
My, my best advice is eyes wide open, you know, it's kind of the way you should approach finance stuff. Know what you're doing, and, you know, rely on your staff, rely on your, rely on the people who are on your side of the table. You know, it's kind of pretty straightforward and simple, you, all are smart people, you would do that in your personal life. My advice is do it in your elected life, you know? It's the best way to go about doing it. Mayor Protem, I think you had a question?
Yes, I do have a question. Yes, I was well aware that Prescott Valley has numerous CFDs for roads, fire, water. And I was going to ask, what's the difference between a CFD and an improvement district?
Sure.
We're, we're going to go through each of those here in a minute, so it may clarify as we go through those types.
Can we save it for then?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I won't forget. That's a good question, and it's easy to crystallize it, I think, as well. Last type of debt, we, we had WIFA up there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. I just want to note it for the council, you know, this is where you've done most of your borrowing for water projects and wastewater projects, kind of obvious to you guys why that is. And you've done it all through this state agency, Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. Again, they're an agency that makes below market loans. So Mr. Woodfill and all of you have taken advantage of that in borrowing for those purposes. So that's been a perfectly fine thing, but that, that falls into that category. And you pay the debt service on these loans, they're kind, they kind of act just like bonds to you, but, but they're really loans with this state agency. You pay the principal and interest back from enterprise fund monies, water, wastewater enterprise fund monies.
And last Thursday, we were on the WIFA board for the last $34 million loan to finish up the intermediate pump station. They approved it unanimously for the 34 million. They're giving us a 20% subsidy on our interest rate, and they gave us 1.5 million something in forgiven principal. So that's principal we'll never have to pay back. So all good news. We don't know the rate yet, we got to wait for some new forms from the federal government to go through WIFA to get to us so we can set a closing date. The interest rate will be set on the closing date, and we'll, of course, bring back whatever that interest rates ends up being.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the, the improvement districts, will those, if it's a separate improvement district, is that type of number included in our numbers then? So if someone sets up a water wastewater improvement district and they then take on debt through, because they can take on their own WIFA debt, correct? They can apply and go through their own processes.
Since they would be in our city limits, they would have to go through us, in our water service area and city limits, it would have to go through us.
So anybody that's in, like, that in-between stage of being annexed or doing the project or, so that all, they wouldn't be a separate district, that, that's all in these numbers?
It would be. We don't have any currently outstanding, we paid off our last one, which was financed through WIFA. It was a wastewater system that we put in out in Forbene Park, just paid off in January. But it was, WIFA did the funding for it, but it was an improvement district, so it, it worked that way. Just, we assessed the property, they paid us, we paid WIFA, that's the way it is.
So we likely won't have any of those moving forward then? Anything that was an improvement district was from any annexation or a move to?
Well, no, we could issue improvement districts, and over the last, the last few years I've been involved with the city, we've done improvement districts, numerous improvement districts. We haven't done any since 2001, I think. I think that might have been our last one.
Okay.
But, you know, they're very useful, and we're going to go over them in a minute, where they best fit, when they're best used, in our next section of this book.
And the, and these are all citywide? You know, this is the city borrowing from WIFA these loans?
Right. And any improvement district we would have in the future would be included in these numbers when we look at our...
We would look at it, it would be a separate line item.
Oh, okay.
Separately disclosed in the caff, in the, I'm sorry, annual, whatever they change.
The debt, the debt would be secured differently? So, you know, when you borrow money, you say, "Here's, here's what I'm pledging to pay you back." An improvement district is a subset of the city? So you'd say, "Hey, look, I'm going to take revenues from this little district, and those are the revenues that are going to pay you back." These are broader because they're citywide. So the city says, "I'm borrowing money and I'm going to pay you back, and I'm going to pledge money in my water fund, or I'm going to pledge money in my wastewater fund."
Great. Thank you.
You betcha. Okay, let's turn to the next section, summary of financing options. There's a bunch of them. I, I was not planning to go through each and every one with you, but I'm happy to, to do that if you want, but just talking big picture on here, pay-as-you-go funding's pretty straightforward, that's using cash. Cash is the cheapest form of... funding is pretty straightforward. That's using cash. Cash is the cheapest form of borrowing, generally speaking. There is an opportunity cost to cash, though I know you're all smiling at me. I work on this with my wife a lot of times, when she spends cash. You know, there's an opportunity cost to cash, because you can invest it, right? So, you know, you've got to be at least thoughtful about that. But for the most part, you're not going to use pay-as-go funding for bigger projects, because you need a whole bunch of cash. There's also an equity issue relative to, if I put in a city hall building, let's say, it's going to be around for a long time. I'm not pissing one, but if I did, you know, it's going to be around for a long time. So it benefits today's citizens. It benefits citizens in the future. If you use cash, the people today pay for it. The people who use it are today's people and future people. That's one way of spreading that equity across different generations, if you will, or different groups of people. General obligation bonds, we'll talk about that. I think that's worth talking about. The city doesn't, as you noted in the first section, doesn't have any general obligation bonds. Those are secured by a property tax, right? Revenue bonds, revenue bonds are bonds that are secured by a specific revenue stream, like wastewater revenues, or water revenues, or if you had an electrical system, an electrical system revenue. Street and highway revenue bonds is another thing under the statute. You pledge street and highway revenues that you receive from the state, from gas tax and vehicle license tax. Lease purchase and lease revenue financings are what you use for pledging your sales taxes, like we talked about, the excise tax bonds. ID bonds, we talked about, those are more for local neighborhood improvements, as opposed to citywide improvements. CFDs are sort of the same. They're for more local neighborhood improvements, but particularly for master plan communities, is where they use the most. And then state agency borrowings, like WIFRA, are all the options that are available to you. So, I'm going to kind of cover some of these. If there's one you want me to stop on, just let me know. So, we talked about cash. That one's pretty straightforward, so I'm skipping cash, okay? Geo bonds. Let me talk about this one just briefly, because Prescott is not absolutely unique, but most cities in Arizona have outstanding geo bonds. Geo bonds can be borrowed for pretty much any purpose, you know. You could do it for wastewater, you could do it for water, you could do it for parks, you can do it for city hall, you can do it for, just by anything you'd ever want to borrow for as a capital project. They're secured by an unlimited property tax. Whatever property tax rate you need to pay them, you levy that rate. So, how you determine how much you can do, really is a function of what tax rate you want to charge people, compared to the property values, commercial, industrial, residential property values in your city. They are subject to voter authorization, so you've got to go out to a vote, you probably all know that. And they are subject to certain constitutional limits. Basically, you can issue geo bonds up to 20% of your net assessed value, okay? So, assessed value under the law, for certain things, water, sewer, parks, et cetera. You can borrow an additional up to 6% for everything else, okay? And that's in the Constitution. When you go out for voter authorization, you can ask for $2 billion, but you can't issue it until you meet those constitutional provisions, okay? So, that's geo bonds. I thought it would be useful to include in the book, just to give you some feel for this, what a certain amount of issuance would be worth. But before we do that, like I just mentioned, the constitutional limits are 20% of your net assessed value. You can issue up to that amount for water, sewer light, parks and open space, transportation and public safety purposes. So, all those purposes. 20% of your net assessed value right now is about $29.7 million. So you could issue up to that amount under the constitutional provisions for those purposes, if you had voter authorization, and if you wanted to levy a property tax. The other type of geo bonds, up to the 6% limit, so for any other purpose, you could issue 62.9 million, based on today's values for the city. And so that's kind of how that worked. The values typically, over time, go up, so you get more capacity. If you issued debt, then you'd say, oh, well, I had 29.7. I issued, you know, 100 million, now I have 109.7 left that I could issue. Okay, so follow on that. Turning to the next page, I just ran an example for you, so you have a feel for it. So I said, well, you know, just for grins and chuckles, so you have a feel for it, what if the city went out and got voter authorization and issued $10 million in general obligation bonds, and borrowed it over a 20-year period, based on a 5% interest rate, which is a conservative interest rate in today's market? Your annual debt service, kind of in the middle of the page, would be about $800,000 a year. Your tax rate to support that would be about 7.5 cents, 7.35 cents is what it came out to on average, over that 20-year financing. If your tax rate is 7.35, the bottom of this page, I gave you a sense of what that would mean for a home valued at $200,000, and it would be about $14.70 to a homeowner a year, or about $1.23 per month. Okay, so, just to give you a feel for it, I'm not pushing you that way, but part of what you want to know is, what's your capacity to issue debt? If it was 20 million, it'd be twice those numbers. If it'd be 30 million, it'd be three times those numbers, right? And so that's kind of how geo bonds work. Questions on that? I went through that quickly, but I think it's pretty straightforward. Anything you want to add on that?
No. The trick is always getting voter approval.
Yeah.
Obviously, that is one of the financing means that is also a funding means, because you get a property tax.
It's a great point. It is, for the city at least, it's probably the one financing type that comes with a revenue source, comes with a property tax. Although, you don't have to levy a property tax. You could issue geo bonds for, let's say, wastewater improvements, and use wastewater money to pay it back, but it's secured by a property tax, okay? Yes, Mayor Proton?
What about a sales tax?
We're going to come to it.
Okay.
Okay? We're going to come to that. Like, bonds backed by sales taxes? Yeah. So, step back for a second. Maybe this is a good thing to say at this point. The way I think of debt, and, you know, how you run your city, you know, you look at your primary revenue sources. You know, you have sales taxes, you have property taxes, you have, you know, utility revenues, right? You know, you think about your main revenue sources, you have state shared revenues, probably another one. You sort of, when you're thinking about debt, I think you sort of go, well, I want, you know, a three- or four-legged chair. You know, I kind of leverage them all. I don't over-leverage one or another. I look at all of them. That doesn't mean I necessarily borrow all of those types, but if you just think about having a sound foundation, you know, you kind of look at it that way. So, you know, that's why I focus on kind of the key ones. If you're going to go out for geo bonds, obviously, you'd have to go out with something that was popular or important with voters, right? Something that isn't an administrative building, not really popular with a lot of voters a lot of times, you know. So, you see people doing geo bonds for things that are more fundamental to people's lives in the community. Utility revenue bonds, we sort of talked about this. You do these now. You do them as WIFRA loans, as opposed to as bond issues. But these are bonds that you go out, and you're going to make wastewater improvements. You go out and you issue bonds, and they're secured by the revenues from running a sewage system, right? And the revenues come in, and you pay operating costs, and you pay debt. It's kind of how they work, pretty straightforward. How much you can issue is tied to how much revenues you have from running your wastewater system or your water system. You do these, you do those, like I said, via WIFRA loans, so I won't spend any more time on them, from that standpoint. Street and highway revenue bonds, similar concepts. So in this case, it's street and highway revenues that the state pays to the city, right? From gas tax, from the highway user revenue fund. You pledge those monies to paying the debt. How much monies you have available to pledge dictates how much debt you can issue. Generally speaking, for revenue bonds, you're going to see coverage tests that say, my revenues for this year have to be two or three times greater than my debt service. So if my debt service is a buck, my revenue's got to be three bucks, right? And so what you look at is what your revenues are, and you say, well, on that basis, here's how much debt I can issue. And you look at what your cash flow availability is. If street and highway revenue, to issue street and highway revenue bonds, you'd look at the revenues, but if you say, hey, spend all the revenues on maintenance, we don't have any money to pay debt service, right? So that would be a limiting factor. And you do these indirectly, because what you've done is excise tax bonds for roads, as Mr. Woodfield said earlier, and you use street and highway revenues to pay them back, because the pledge that you can do on the excise tax is so much greater, you get a lot higher rating, you get a lot lower interest rate, okay? So, utility revenues and street and highway. Lease purchase, lease revenue financings, Mayor Proton, this is excise taxes. So, the structure that you use for an excise tax borrowing is you do a lease purchase or a lease revenue financing, technically, but you pledge excise taxes. And excise taxes are city sales tax, state shared revenues, fines, fees, forfeitures to the city. It's basically the bulk of what it is, like we talked about earlier. Same sort of concept in terms of how much you can issue. It's historical revenues compared to debt service. Revenues in your existing legal documents say that the revenues for the fiscal year prior to the year you're issuing have to be three times higher than the maximum annual debt service of the existing debt plus the new debt. If that was all there was, you could issue a billion dollars, because you have a lot of revenues. You have 44 million of revenue, right? However, as Mr. Woodfield has told you, I sense, sort of in a scintillating way at many occasions, is that you spend most of your money, you know, to run the city. So, the second limiting factor is, well, how much cash do you have? So, this is an area that I know the council has some interest in. We ran some numbers, just to give you a sample on this. And we said, well, let's say that the city council said, hey, I got 3 million bucks I just found, right? Councilwoman Hall, come back in, show up, $3 million that you guys can use to pay debt. How much debt would that support? And what I said is, so if you budgeted 3 million each year, let's say out of your general fund, and increased that amount by 2% each year, just for grins and chuckles, how much could you borrow? And so this chart that's up there right now, you can see, the first column, I put pledged revenues, the 44 million of excise taxes that you have. I showed the existing debt service that you have. It's about 2.7 million per year, going out to 2029, and it drops to 800,000. I show you your new debt service. So it's 3 million in year one, goes up by 2% each year after that, okay? And so that's what that would look like. And if you go to the next page, you'll see that that would amount to borrowing, I did this borrowing over a 20-year financing term, at current interest rates, plus a little cushion, and it would allow you to have 47.8 million of project funds. Okay, so let me crystallize that. If you had $3 million that you felt was just hanging around, that you said, hey, look, I want to dedicate $3 million to paying debt, to do whatever great things I want to do for the city, and I'm going to increase the amount each year by 2%. So year one, it's 3 million. Year two, it's 3 million 60,000, et cetera, all the way out for 20 years. It would add up to about $72.8 million that you would have spent over those 20 years, and you would get upfront about $47.8 million to do whatever capital projects you wanted. Parks, sewers, whatever, okay? I also then did a 30-year example. So borrow out for 30 years. Again, start with $3 million. It grows 2% a year. It adds up to 121.7 million that you've spent over 30 years, and the amount that you would have in project funds is 62.3 million. Not promoting neither of those concepts, but just giving you a sense for, like, how the numbers work. If you said, ah, Kurt, I love this idea, but I don't have $3 million. I only have a million and a half. Well, then cut the numbers in half. Instead of having 62.3, you got 31, right? And, you know, we can run any numbers you want, but I think that that might be helpful from a council standpoint, thinking about, well, like, you know, if I want to borrow for things, because there's all these needs, right? Like, okay, well, this is how this works with us, excise taxes.
Can I just ask a quick question for clarification?
Of course.
When you say money lying around, are you talking about monies from the general fund in this case, that would be, that we could pledge to service this debt?
Could be. Mr. Woodfield, wait. So it could be, you would pledge excise taxes. It could be available cash in the general fund. It could be available cash in your enterprise funds, if you're doing a water project or a road project.
And absolutely. It's a pledge of general fund revenues for the bonds legally. But if the project has a purpose that is specific to a special revenue fund or an enterprise fund, the debt service can actually come out of those revenues. And again, this is just out there, just to give some ideas. And of course, the shorter you finance, the higher that debt service, the longer, the longer. And it is something you have to pay back. So if you have $5 million of operating surplus in the general fund, and now you're spending 3 million here, there's only 2 million available for, I don't know, new fire station staffing, new north Prescott library staffing, any of those other operating needs. So just something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Yeah. And it's just, you know, I mean, yeah, think about your own lives, right? Like, you know, we all have this. We have income that comes in, we have expenses, our operating expenses, ongoing expenses, and we have debts, right? Nobody likes debts, right? I don't like them. I don't have any. You know, it's kind of a funny thing for a bond guy. But, you know, you take on debt, and you go, okay, well, I'm going to take on this debt. I'm going to have to build that into my budget. Do I have enough money? I want a $5 million house. Actually, my wife does. I can't afford a $5 million house, right? I can afford a million dollar house. You know, whatever it might be, you know, that's how that works. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, so that's excise tax.
Mayor Proton, these are your improvement district?
Another one of your, you know, big stools. Excise tax is a big stool. Property tax is a big stool, or a big leg on a stool, excuse me. Okay, improvement district bonds. You know, really, improvement district bonds, I think of improvement district bonds as being a useful financing approach for local neighborhood improvements. Streets, lightings, lighting, sewer, could be any number of things like that. They're all enumerated in the statute. They have to be public infrastructure. They're owned by the public, the city. They're secured by assessments levied against the property in the district. So, pick an area, you know your city, pick an area, draw a circle around it, there's your improvement district. I am going to now assess, put assessment liens on the property in the district. And the amount of the lien I'm going to put on any property is going to be a function of what benefit they realize, what relative benefit they realize from whatever public infrastructure you're putting in. Easy one. I'm putting in a road. How much is my frontage on the road? That's how, that your pro-rata share is what your assessment will be, right? So that's how improvement district liens work. And an assessment lien is second only to property taxes. So, property tax has a first lien on your property. The second lien is improvement district debt assessment liens. The city also has a contingent liability when you issue improvement district debt. What does that mean? And then I'll answer your question, Mayor Proton. That means that I put an assessment on the property in the district. If a person doesn't pay their assessment, then after a certain period of time, their property gets struck off and sold via public auction, okay? Like steps to the sheriff courthouse, or the courthouse steps. If no one bids to buy it for the amount of the assessment owing, then the city has to step in and buy it. That's your contingent liability. Shows up in your financial statements in the footnotes, recognized as debt out there. And so, when you do improvement district debt, what you do is you go, hey, look, I'm going to use it for a local improvement, flooding, fire, roads, different things like that. I'm going to figure out how much it costs. I'm going to figure out what the value is of the property in the district. And you, from the city's standpoint, since you have a contingent liability, you might be liable for it. You want to make sure that the value of the property is sufficiently high, compared to the amount of debt you're doing. Because if no one pays, if it all goes kaput, and you've got to sell the property, this property gets sold kind of at fire sale prices, so you've got to discount what it gets sold at. So, normally, what we'd say to a city is, hey, hey, look, look at the value of the property in the district. Make sure it's four times greater than the amount of the improvements, the amount of debt you're doing. That way, you know, like if we go into a drawback, like right now, property values are inflated. They're starting to head down. If they go down, we don't want the city left holding the farm. And if the values are high enough, if you think about it, most people won't walk away from their property for failing to pay the assessment because the value of the property is worth multiples of the assessment. Mayor Proton.
What about reimbursement districts?
Reimbursement districts.
Yeah, that's more of a, just a legal, it's not really a financing means. They're generally used when a property owner, you know, 100 yards from a water main, once the water main extended. So they upfront the monies. And then the people, as they tie in, will reimburse that property owner through the permitting process here. We'll charge them and send the money to that property owner.
We're doing that on Mullen Way?
Yeah, it's a little different because that's a city reimbursement deal, which, and again, I'm not the legal expert. We have legal experts in the room. But you just want to be careful on city reimbursement district that there is some public benefit to the loaning of funds. Obviously, in Mullen Way, it's a fire risk area. We're putting in water lines. I think that meets probably the public need side of it to let us upfront those monies to be reimbursed. Probably, maybe never. See, there's that maybe never in there. If people don't ever tie in to it, you will never get reimbursed. I don't know if you could stretch it to cover the gift clause if that was a sewer area because there's not a lot of public, overall public benefit for putting in a small neighborhood on the sewer system to justify the risk to public funds. But that's kind of beyond, that's not really a financing means. You know, that's, you know, we don't do too many of those.
Okay.
So will the improvement district bonds do ad valorem taxes too and not just pro rata? Like, I know property taxes will for the improvement districts, but...
Municipal improvement district bonds, this one we're talking about, are only assessment lien bonds.
Only by a pro rata share, though? They won't do like an ad valorem?
They're not pro rata. They're based on the benefit realized. So again, if I put in a road and your lot has this much of the road and my lot has this much of the road, I'm going to pay that many times more than you in terms of the assessment put on my property. So let's say it costs a million dollars to do the road.
No, yeah, I understand that part.
Okay, you're with me. Okay, cool.
The property, like in improvement districts, some property tax, sometimes they'll do a property taxes based on the value of the property. So that way, some of that debt is allocated specifically to a higher, or higher value. So even if you have, you know, let's say apartments and duplexes and whatever, and then somebody builds a million dollar house, they will get assessed more of that cost because they have exceeded more of the benefit because it's increased their value, changing it from subject to sewer.
Improvement districts are on benefit realized by law. CFDs, you can do a general obligation bond. We'll talk about that next slide. Those are like, more like a property tax. And if it's a property tax, then absolutely the value of your property matters.
No.
These don't. These are based on benefit. By law, someone has to come in, and you hire someone for this, an assessment person, comes in and looks at it and decides what is the benefit that each property in the district receives based on whatever is being done, you know? So if I do a road and, you know, like sometimes you use an improvement district, and maybe it's for a small neighborhood that's going in, and you put in a big trunk line, everybody benefits from that. But then you have a sideline, side streets, little side streets. Well, then that's the footage that you have on the street. It's the way they do that. The assessment engineers do that for benefit purposes. You know, there's lots of different ways that you go about doing it. If you put a park in, if my house is on the park, I'm going to pay a higher assessment than if my house is in the neighborhood, but not on the park. So, but they're all assessment liens. None of them are on value of the land.
And again, I know we're running out of time, so we'll need to speed up here. But I just wanted to just cover a couple more topics with improvement district. It does not require voter approval to form. It's best used in a populated area that already has houses in it that need an additional service. I live in subdivision A. I had sewer and paved streets and sidewalks put in when I bought my house. Subdivision B did not. It has subject tanks and dirt roads. To bring that one up to the level of the rest of the city and not have the rest of the city have to pay for that, you do an improvement district in that one subdivision. And again, it does not require voter approval, but the citizens can petition with 51% or 50 plus one of them petitioning to dissolve it, and the district goes away, and the improvement does not happen. So.
And you can also, as an individual, protest your inclusion. And you have a protest hearing, and it's a hearing in front of the city council. And I say, hey, I don't think I should be in this stupid improvement district. I'm just on the edge of it. And the council decides.
And again, we used to do these all the time. We usually had 10 or 11 of them running through the 80s and 90s. But council has not felt that they were feasible recently. Any of the, whether it's Mullen Way or an unsuwered area, council has not decided to go forward with it for various reasons, which...
The bonds themselves are not bad bonds, though. They're rated one category below the general rating for the city. So they're kind of highly rated because the city has contingent liability. Okay, second to last one, community facilities district bonds. Won't take too long. We're going to have another hour-long get-together on this at some point down the road. But community facilities districts can issue three types of bonds under the law. General obligation bonds, so those are secured by property taxes, just like a city GO, except only within the district. Special assessment bonds issued, again, only liens on property in the district, and revenue bonds. Nobody ever does revenue bonds, so I'm just going to ignore them. Revenue bonds would be backed by, like, revenues of a water utility or electric utility or wastewater utility. No one's really done those in the state other than really unique situations. So almost all CFD bonds are either general obligation bonds or special assessment bonds. The Mayor Proton asked earlier about what's the difference between improvement district bonds and CFD bonds? Well, the difference between improvement district bonds, which are assessment bonds, and CFD bonds that are assessment bonds, not GO bonds, but assessment bonds, is a really simple, the simplest thing is, there is no contingent liability to the city on the CFD bonds. So if I, as a property owner, don't pay, I lose my property. It's not the city's problem. Okay? Cities can get sued if you do a CFD and the thing goes kaput, doesn't work very well, it's a bad deal. Cities can get sued as a deep pocket. You are involved in establishing it, but you don't have a direct liability. ID bonds, you have a direct contingent liability. You must pay, and the courts have held, you can be forced to levy a property tax to make the payment on ID debt. So that's the difference. ID bonds have, are rated well. They're rated off of your credit. CFD bonds are often non-rated. They don't have the same credit quality, right? Mostly, they're done in circumstances of raw land. So they're dirt deals, right? So.
Significantly higher. When we did Haciapa, it was 300 basis points higher than what we were issuing debt.
Higher interest rates, right? Not rated, higher interest rates, different kind of debt. Doesn't make them bad, just that's what they are. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you betcha. So GO bonds or special assessment bonds, how much you can do is tied to the value of the land. They're developer-driven. Generally speaking, Mr. Woodfield's not going to come to me and say, hey, I thought we should issue some CFD bonds for something. It's more if someone's doing a master plan community and they come and, like I was telling you earlier, the developer goes, hey, I'd like to finance as much public infrastructure as I can.
And then again, that's what the policy that we'll bring to you will do. We'll give you guys ability, you as the council, the ability to say, we're fine with you financing X and Y because it's kind of beyond what a normal subdivision is. But as far as financing the regular roads within the subdivision, we don't think that's appropriate for our citizens who are going to live there. Because remember, citizens move into all these districts, whether, you know, whether they're new or old citizens. They, new or long-term, we won't use the word old, into these districts.
Okay, three minutes, and then we're done. Okay? New idea, exciting, you guys. Now we're getting to the scintillating part, right? Three minutes left. Just this last one, state agency borrowings. We kind of talked about it. Various of the state agencies run lending programs pretty much for specific things. Aviation purposes, road purposes. Water infrastructure finance authority. WIF is the only one that gives subsidized loans. You guys are taking good advantage of that. Great, kudos to you. Maybe some point, the airport or something, maybe you'll get something on ADAT's aerodynamics loan program. But they're smaller programs, okay? Then lastly, just the last thing I want to cover just briefly is your bond ratings. Kudos to the city. You have great bond ratings. You only have ratings on your excise tax bonds. Moody's has you at a AA3 rating. The highest rating is AAA. So between AA3 and AAA, there's AA2 and AA1. You're three categories below AAA. S&amp;P has you AA+. You're one category below AAA, the highest rating. So those are very good ratings. I mentioned earlier, the community facilities districts aren't rated. You don't have any of the other type of debt. At the bottom of that page, it can tell you what the ratings are about. But next page is the thing I wanted to share with you. Here are ratings, current ratings for other cities of, you know, similar size, a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller, et cetera, around the state, just so you'd have a feel. On the Moody's rating, so an A1 is the next category below a AA3. So that's Avondale. You can see, you can see Flagstaff's AA2. That's one category higher than you in rating. AA1 is two categories higher. That's Goodyear. Little bit different deal because it's in the Phoenix metro area. Sierra Vista's the same as you, AA3. S&amp;P, you're AA+. You can go down the list. Most of those cities are double As. Some AA minuses in there, like Chino Valley, like Flag. Goodyear's AA+. So, you know, your ratings are very strong. You don't have a rating from Fitch. It's a third agency. I wouldn't want the city to pay for three agencies. There's not value in doing it, so.
For sure. And, you know, your ratings, you know, they review them every year. They call and talk to us every year, and we go through the dog and pony show every year with them. But until you issue a new debt, they don't, honestly, I don't think they look at it as hard as they do when you issue a new debt. And I think the next time we issue a new debt, we will have the PSPRS liability paid off, which I think will go a long ways. I don't know if it's going to go far enough to get to a AAA because I don't think we demographically pan out to AAA, no matter what you do.
Not possible. Yeah, not possible. AAA is really for people that don't issue debt. Heritage values rated AAA. It's got really high wealth indicators. Doesn't issue debt.
Doesn't issue.
Kind of like, okay, you got a AAA, great. Like, doesn't mean anything if you don't borrow. The last thing is, in the book, our recent rating agency reports. I'm not going to cover them. You can read them at your leisure. They provide, they make for, you know, they're short. They're a couple, few pages long. The one from Moody's is from 2021, the last time they published one. The one from S&amp;P is December 2019. You might read through them. It's a third-party independent view of the city's credit. So it gives you a sense of like what credit people look like when they look at the city and how they decide if you're highly rated or not highly rated. You know, it's, there's a lot of factors that go into it, including population growth, economic conditions, job conditions, how well you're managed, if the council's got a clue. All those kinds of things go into it. That's all I got.
And I know, I'm sorry, we went a little longer than I had hoped, but it's all good discussion. Again, I apologize. I know it's been a long day. And I wanted to thank Kurt for coming up. He's always willing to help us even when we don't pay him that often. He only gets paid when we do debt issues, so not that much.
Like a doctor, you know, like really good on other people's health, not so good on mine. In all seriousness, though, a pleasure meeting with all of you and seeing you. And I'll also tell you, Mark can get your number to me. If you ever have a question, call. I don't mind taking questions from any of you, so happy to help. Any other questions today?
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Thank you all. Have a great afternoon.
All right, now we have amendments to Prescott City Code 8-2, City Rider Way. Why don't we take about five minutes, and then we'll come back and keep going? I've got 12:40. We'll start at 12:45.
Doing a five-minute recess, everybody.
Trading off.
Five-minute recess.
You probably don't want to.
Yeah. So that could be, yeah, I was going to see.
Joe.
Yeah.
Joe. Pretty good, Joe.
How are you, my friend?
Good. I was going to chat with Joe about the stuff I asked you about.
You should.
Yeah.
Do you want to have a sidebar now?
I don't know. I think it's a couple of minutes. Yeah, do you want to do that? Do you want to come?
You guys do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Started late.
I want you to...
Okay, that works. Perfect.
You can go to my office.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is that okay with you? Or do you want to not miss activity? Okay, cool. Thank you.
The moment I do that, there'll be something in there. Somebody asking questions.
Conflicts with airport uses. One of the things that we've looked at more recently are overlay districts. An overlay district is one that sits on top of all of the other districts that are existing beneath it. An overlay district preempts those lower districts if there are conflicts. So if the overlay district says yes and the other districts say no, yes is the controlling factor. One of the ways that this could benefit the airport is by placing this overlay district, we can protect, eliminate, remove, encourage, there are a number of different ways to do it, uses that are compatible and remove uses that are not compatible, even though those uses may be allowed citywide in the underlying zoning districts. A commercial zoning district allows what it allows in commercial zoning districts everywhere. You can't tailor it to each area of the city, but you can create an overlay district in a particular area and that overlay district then becomes the controlling factor. This would allow us to do that. Those overlay districts are relatively common. We have three existing, one of which we're proposing to change. Can I have that on a slide? We have an airport noise overlay which is ineffective at best in its current form that would be replaced by this airport vicinity overlay that will have land use controls well beyond what's proposed or what's currently in the noise overlay. Commercial corridor and historic preservation districts kind of make sense. Historic preservation areas, you want to have some limitations on what can be done in those districts because you're trying to preserve history. Commercial corridor, you want to encourage commerce along major corridors and that district actually has encouragements, not just limitations. So this is the type of zoning that we want to do to protect the airport. Overlays being the most geographically controllable by council. You can determine where that overlay sits on a map.
About the others?
So the folks who are in our seat before us and in your seat before you did do some pretty wise planning. They did create a specific, airport-specific area plan referred to as the ASAP. It was created back in 2001 and it was updated most recently in 2013 and 2017. They used a layered approach in that plan and basically it addressed safety, noise, overflight, disclosures, easements. And in fact, in 2001, there was an airport influence area that was established that required easements in a 26-square section area around the airport. And so folks have been, you know, signing easements for years relating to being in proximity to the airport. There was also a land use plan that was developed. It was funded by the FAA in 2007. The purpose was to create a document that was acceptable to both the airport and the city. That also contained a layered approach for noise, particularly the land use and the interior sound mitigation was addressed in one part of the document. And it was based on 65 DNL noise contours, which is a shape of a contour showing noise impact in a community. We'll be discussing that a little later. It also addressed overflight and safety and that was the element of compatible land use mentioned in the earlier grant assurance. So it was based on a combination of airport impact zones, land use density, and a 55 DNL contour that was established as well. That was adopted in 2011 as an airport master plan appendix. And then in 2013, the city council did incorporate several elements of that plan into the airport-specific area plan. So there is foundation for what we're talking about today. These are not new diagrams or documents that we have created in the last few weeks. This has been around for a couple decades.
One interesting point is the airport-specific area plan adopted in 2001 had a land use plan attached to it and that land use plan was incorporated into our general plan in 2003 to give it a little more enforceability because land use plans in the general plan have controls that land use plans elsewhere do not. So that was adopted in, in support of that. I think this one's yours.
Okay. So why should we replace the current LDC section? Well, first of all, the current airport noise overlays only focused on noise and navigation easement, but unfortunately, it did not look at the very important safety aspect associated with some other elements of the land use plan and the airport-specific area plan. The noise controls are actually based on older noise measurements. So back in the 1970s, there's something called the Schultz curve that was developed and it was last updated in 1992. And basically what it said within certain ranges, how highly annoyed somebody is at aircraft noise. And why this is important is the more annoyed an entity is, the more they're probably going to object to any future development involving the airport, its growth, its expansion, and they stand in opposition. If you sign a navigation easement, it doesn't prevent you from coming to a public hearing and protesting the future development of an airport. So the last thing you want to do is bring people into an area, have them become highly annoyed, at which point then they will stand en masse against the proposed development. The land use plan does not reflect the airport land, the airports, I'm sorry, the LDC does not currently reflect the airport land use plan, the airport-specific area plan exactly, or some of that current research on noise sensitivity, which suggests that people in close proximity to the airport are generally highly annoyed. Surprise? Okay.
There's no annoyance easement.
Right. It does not specifically address airport impact zones. Impact zones are established and we'll be talking about that based on safety. And it does not address the FAA base height analysis that's required, the airline's one engine and operative splay that's required on departure, which is what the FAA requires of the airline. It doesn't address residential density near the airport or a fair notice disclosure. And to bring this to your attention, that is something that many other communities in the state do have in their code. We don't have it in ours. It also doesn't address specific hazard prevention mitigation, removal of trees, antennas, use of drones, and so we do need to make sure that that is updated accordingly. So the proposed new AVO incorporates both noise contours and airport impact zones. It provides map boundaries for the noise and impact zones, clear tables for each impact zone so you know what the uses are associated with those boundaries that are established. It explains each of those zones and the reasons for those zones. It sets the boundaries for the navigation easements. It allows fair notice disclosure to the residents and potential renters in those areas. It also provides boundaries and notice for the FAA baseline airspace evaluation. It also provides some additional protections for critical airspace such as the airline and their need to be able to depart safely. And also provides measures for hazard prevention, mitigation, and removal. So it actually makes a lot of progress in all these areas where the deficiencies are obvious in our code. So here's an example of land use compatibility and it is using something referred to as airport impact zones. These impact zones are widely adopted. It's, an impact is by its own definition, an accident. That's what we're referring to. And so it limits damages caused by aviation accident. It helps to protect the airport's viability and it also limits noise impact on really sensitive areas. On the right-hand side, you can see the overlay of our three runways and the impact zones associated with those runways. Now, these impact zones were actually created for use in the airport land use plan, which was completed in 2011, and it was also integrated into the airport-specific area plan in 2013. So here's an example of how those particular impact zones are, appear over communities near the airport. And in fact, this is the subject of a meeting that we're going to have with some of those community members tomorrow night. Tomorrow night, yep. And you can see that in each of those impact zones, it does say that there's certain uses associated with that, which we'll show in the next slide. Just to give you an idea, in impact zones one and two, 30% to 50% of all near-airport accidents do occur in that zone, and this is based on NTSB accident data over several years. Airport history at Prescott states that, at least from our research, we see that there have been at least 80 impacts that have occurred since the airport was founded in 1928. And this is on or near the airport. So the fact is, there will likely be impacts when you're near an airport. The fact that more impacts occur in zone one and two does not negate the fact that zones three through six also have the potential for impact. So we obviously want to make sure that residents in those areas are aware of this, even though these, these impact zones have been around since 2011. It isn't well-known by the public and we think in part about transparency that the council has stated that they want to, you know, go forward with as, as well as the airport's need for transparency. We want to share this information with the public. So here's a, if you'd like to go ahead and jump in.
So one of the things that the land development code does very well is list off all potential uses or examples of uses and tells you by category in each zone whether those uses are allowed or not. The overlay district would do the same thing. Again, because it's an overlay, the list of uses that we show in this table that are part of the airport vicinity overlay district would preempt those in the other district. So the other district might say yes and this one may say no. This one will control. This allows us to take into account just the area around the airport that experiences impacts from the airport or could cause impacts on the airport and not affect zoning everywhere in town. The other alternative of modifying the entire zoning code would be much more complicated and potentially more of a problem for diminution of value complaints by property owners if we take rights away. These are a little bit different. It's more constrained. It's within an area that is certainly well-documented to have impacts on the airport and vice versa, be impacted by the airport. So again, this is one of the ways that we believe is the safest and most effective way to provide additional support for the airport through zoning, which has a huge case law backing it up, a lot of history backing it up, is well-established that the city of Prescott has a police power to enact a zoning. And that is following the path with this process. So I believe this is probably the best way to approach it.
So noise compatibility is a really important element of this. And basically, we look at compatibility with uses and the frequency of aircraft and overflights. Under the FAA's methodology, they use something called the average, they night average sound level. So you hear something referred to as DNL. That is not single event noise. That is accumulation or an average of noise over 24 hours. So for some people, that's a little confusing because you take a single event and you average that out over 24 hours and you add all the events together. So when you see a 65 decibel level that's being referred to, or in this case, you can see an older contour on the screen, that's a 60 DNL contour that was generated in 2013. What's happening is that is generated from several aircraft overflights averaged over 24 hours. There is a five decibel or 10 decibel hit that's given and when you're weighting it for occurrences between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And when we go through our Airport 101, we'll talk more about noise contours and how they're developed. Suffice to say that certain land uses are considered very noise-sensitive. Homeowners don't like to live under significantly noise-impacted areas. It also affects the ability to sleep and learn and there are socioeconomic disadvantages associated with being under high noise levels. So there has been additional noise study that has been done by the FAA. They just completed, it was announced in 2021, a study was completed, 40,000 surveys were put out, the Neighborhood Survey, Neighborhood Environmental Survey. They received 10,000 responses back. What they found is that that noise level shown on the screen, the old Schultz curve that they were using to generate their cutoff for acceptable and unacceptable noise showed that only about 20% in the old days was considered to be highly annoyed living under that contour. The newest noise and environmental study that was conducted said that actually, if you live under that same contour, more than 50% of the people would be considered highly annoyed if they were within that contour. So the noise, noise research is evolving. It's evolving here, too. We are actually doing updated noise contours and we should have those updated noise contours by the end of the month.
So one of the ways that we're addressing the noise issue within the proposed airport vicinity overlay is to create a table very similar to the land use, but using the noise decibel levels, the DNL levels for the use categories. In some uses, it's perfectly fine to be in a 60 to 65 DNL level and operate functionally and others, it is not. Those would be modified, this is just an example table, those would be modified to address individual and specific uses as where they're allowed within the noise contours. So now we have two tables in the airport vicinity overlay. One that controls land use is based on the impact zones where they lie. And the other, adding to that in concert with that, controlling uses within the noise contours where those, those uses may lie. And in some cases, you're going to find that a use is permitted by one table and not by another. The more restrictive always applies when it comes to zoning. The more restrictive would limit that use from that particular area. This is, again, a pretty common approach in zoning, well-established case law to support the use of this type of approach. I don't know if we really need to go into this much more detail. The high end of that is generally where teenagers fall and the rest of us fall at the lower end of it.
So this is the airport influence area. This is actually where you are to sign an navigation easement if you receive a building permit or a development permit. It's to give the, some information to the prospective buyer or the actual homeowner as to what the impacts of the airport may be. So there's, there's a couple of documents that we've used in the past. The navigation easement is the document that's associated with the airport influence area. It notifies property owners. It provides right to flight over the property and it also indemnifies the city as the owner and operator of the airport. There are other documents that have been used in the past referred to as disclosures and those disclosures actually are a part of the Arizona revised statutes. In some cases, voluntary or private parties have created disclosures. You can see the public airport disclosure map up there on the bottom right and that is actually posted on the Arizona Department of Real Estate website. An important part of what is done is that the FAA does engage and help us, help prospective developers go through a height obstruction evaluation process. It's basically a baseline. It doesn't determine all proposed obstructions and their impacts on airport operations. It is required by grant assurances and it does limit heights. It applies to both permanent and temporary structures and a lot of us refer to it as the 7460 process. Even though the FAA does it, we do help prospective applicants go through this process. What's important is this FAA evaluation does not cover several things. It doesn't cover, for example, the critical airspace and airport requirements associated with the OEI, which is the one engine and operative departure path splay that's, that the airline is required to have under FAA rules. It doesn't absolve the airport sponsor of any land use obligations. We still have to do things relating to safety and that's those impact zones, compatibility, and transparency. And it also doesn't consider aircraft that are not operating properly. So if there's an accident, it's sort of like, the FAA evaluation looks at the center line of the highway or the freeway and the airport sponsor is obligated under compatible land use to make sure we have the shoulders, the signs, the enforcement, and all the other things associated with, with building a freeway. So it's kind of the one and two together. So some people say, well, if I meet the FAA processes, everything else, fine, and that's not the case. The FAA process is much bigger because of the other additional requirements under our grant assurances.
And covers a larger area.
It does. In fact, well, this is the area that's covered by the FAA. It's actually 20,000 linear feet from the end of every single runway. So you can see that it extends quite far. So if you are going to do something in those areas, it's a pretty easy form to fill out. And generally, the further out areas are, there's not an issue with building a structure. But the point is that the FAA does require this. This is under FAR Part 77. It's a federal aviation regulation requirement that this area be evaluated, any construction or alteration in this area be evaluated. So in closing, it's not simple. The, the district that we're proposing actually does cover several layers of airport protection that are required. And you can kind of see, here's the airport in the middle of this screen. These are the two runways that are main commercial service runway and general aviation and this is the crosswind runway. And this shows you that there are several layers of protection. The FAA basic airspace protection, this is an example of the one engine and operative splay that the airline is required to maintain. There are those airport impact zones, as you can see off the end here. There are noise contours that are centered on the airport. There is an airport influence area right here. And there is a public airport disclosure map. That's not to mention other airport impacts like smoke, lights, glare, drones, wildlife attractants. So when you're near an airport, and this is the only regional commercial service airport we have in Yavapai County and only one of a handful that we have in northern Arizona, it's a precious resource. And you can see there's a lot in it in order to protect it and the community and the airspace.
So as Bren mentioned at the very beginning, the next few steps in the process will involve public meetings first, starting tomorrow with some of the neighborhoods who are in immediate vicinity of the airport. But following that are planning commission meetings and they will be well-advertised meetings. We did come up in earlier discussions with the concept of the joint council, planning commission, and perhaps airport advisory committee meeting. We will come back to you with a proposal for that and see what you think of that, that situation. It would be a good way to start everyone off on the same footing with the same information and then as it works its way through the normal process, which will take multiple meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we'll be bringing back to you reports of progress and/or bringing back drafts of the airport vicinity overlay ordinance itself. So you'll see it, the public will see it, and this will be a very clear process for anyone involved. And with that, any of us who spoke today would be happy to answer your questions and I apologize for running this a little long.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. You know, we've gone over this and I'd just like to know, or to have you reassure me, why is it so important to have this AVO be put into the LDC?
You want?
Go ahead and start.
I do not believe the grant assurances really allow us to have documents like these be recommendational. That means it's at the option of somebody who is in the position of making a decision to do a use, an activity, build a structure. It becomes optional for them to be able to decide if they want to do it or not and the impact could be extraordinary. For example, if somebody were to build something in the approach end of the runway in the airline splay, it's very possible it may lead, it may limit the number of seats onboard that aircraft. And that really does keep us from being able to not only use the air service we have, but to grow the air service in the future. So it needs to move from the recommendational category and to be, and where it's been negotiated agreement by agreement to a zoning category where it's an important and enforceable.
So this is important for grant assurances?
Yes.
Does the FAA particularly look at the LDC and say, did you put it in the LDC?
You have to provide evidence that you're meeting the grant assurances in those areas, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
But it is a recommendation in FAA documents to include zoning as part of the protections of the airport and this is one clear, easy way for us to establish zoning districts which have considerable authority under the law to protect the airport. And, and I'm not going to put the new attorney under the gun at the moment, but he, he would be able to provide evidence at future meetings of just how important having that police power, which zoning is, in your favor in protecting the airport as opposed to recommendations through the various documents that we've adopted.
So so far, up until now, has it just been a recommendation and not codified in the LDC?
Councilman, one of the frustrations that we've had as a staff and something that I think I've beaten to death with the old council and maybe a little bit with you is [inaudible]. AED, the reason you did that is because you didn't have any regulations. The best way to solve that is to put this in code.
Sure.
So this is actually fulfilling something that I've suggested for the better part of two years. Is that fair?
At least.
At least two. But I think that gets lost in translation. That's the point, is that we don't have to have a, additional every development gets treated differently. This codifies how you go about doing your business around the airport.
So it's about time?
Yes, it is. And it's not about just protecting.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to kind of, and so I'm happy to see that. I also want to just give you my feedback today that I think doing that joint meeting with the airport advisory committee, the council, and the planning and zoning commission is a great idea and I would strongly encourage you to do it because I think it's critical that all those different entities have that same understanding. The other question I have is what, and this is probably a difficult question to ask, to answer, so I apologize, but how confident are you that the changes we're making today are going to make it so that we don't have to go back to the well and modify this going forward again? Or that we're really kind of making sure that we're on the right track as additional developments come down the line?
Zoning's been around for 100 years or more. I'm confident that through the process that we're about to follow, we will be able to address most of the things that potentially could affect the airport in the future. One of the advantages that we have is that others have gone before us in other parts of Arizona that we can borrow from and look for those things that we need to address. But no matter what we do, someone's going to be more creative than we are at some point in the future and we may need to go back and address this. The likelihood of that happening in the near term after adoption of a code, almost nothing. We will address everything we can before we bring it to you for a vote. And that's just our typical process for any rezoning or any zoning changes, but especially in this case.
Your pro tem, Ruth Singh, you're recognized.
Thank you and thank you for this presentation. This is all about public safety and protection of the airport is also protection of the public. And we need to make sure that we don't have people that want to build schools and churches and homes in unsafe areas at the end of the runway and under the flight path. And incredible as it may sound, there are people out there that want to do that and we need to codify this so that we can prevent those things from happening. And my other comment is, are we going to be able to include some of these maps in the code, actually in the code, so that when people look it up, they just don't see some charts, they'll actually see the maps?
We have a number of different maps that are part of the land development code now and certainly the relevant maps that we've shown you today will be incorporated in some fashion that's easy for the public to understand.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Dr. Sabata and George Worley for this presentation today and for the public's opportunity to see this. I think you did an excellent job presenting this material and I'm really glad that this information is now becoming available to the public and that the public will get involved in this process and understand the importance of, for all the reasons that Kathy just mentioned, for public safety, for homeowners, for the protection of the airport, that we can continue to take care of this asset. So thank you very much, both of you, for what you're doing to enact this overlay, zoning overlay.
Councilwoman Hall, did you have a question?
Yeah. So what does it mean exactly, I know you guys talked about the meeting tomorrow, but for the folks who already have a home there, what will that look like for them? Does it, how does that?
In most cases, it won't really affect them. One of the concepts that exists in zoning that's well-established, again, is illegal non-conforming use is one that was legal when it was created, but now that rules have changed, typically it's something caused by the government. Those uses can remain. They can remain and in some cases, even be slightly expanded without becoming an issue under the code. The issues occur when you try to make the uses much larger or if you replace the use with something, you can't necessarily go back to what you had before. So most of the homes that exist in areas where homes would not be encouraged or allowed would still be allowed to remain. They can still be owned, occupied. Nothing changes in that regard. We would just look at anything that they were supposed to do to the property that might make it more non-conforming than it already is. And that's what would be limited by the code. So we're not kicking people out of houses. We're not going to tell you, you can't have a doghouse in the backyard or, or replace your fence. We're going to look at all of the circumstances surrounding the existing use and they have property rights. We're going to protect those property rights as much as we protect anyone else's.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Dr. Sabata, for the presentation. I think this is very, very, very long overdue. We've been trying to get full and complete disclosure available to all the homeowners and the business owners around the airport for a number of years now. Anybody in the audience can see all these different overlay districts and some of them mean certain things and some of them mean other things. But the bottom line is, if you own property, you should understand what the impact of being close to the airport is. Have that information fully disclosed to you. Acknowledge that, that disclosure through a navigation easement and then write it into your ESCRO, ESCRO instructions so you and future owners of your property understand what those impacts are. are and that you accept those, and their way is no surprises when you decide to lease your property, when you decide to sell it to somebody else, and somebody says, oh, I never knew that there was going to be that much impact. Well, we had a similar number of operations as we're having today back in 2007, 2008, and the amount of general aviation dropped off, commercial operation dropped off the cliff. And guess what? Nobody was buying houses around there, so it didn't bother them too much. But obviously, times have changed, and it's our obligation as a city to make sure that you're fully aware of what property you own and how you can enjoy it to the best of your capacity. So thank you for those presentations. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll get started with our city council meeting. Right now, it's 3:26. How about we start at 3:30? Take that a four-minute break.
Let's do 3:40, because I've got all the things uploaded and things like that.
All right, we're making that 3:40.